I'll open the meeting. Thank you. So we got recording in progress.
This meeting is being recorded, yes.
And this meeting is being recorded via Zoom. This agenda for anyone else that is attending, they see Nick, is to rectify some areas of the proposed warrant articles that relate to the new Affordable Homes Act, ADU by law provisions or by ADU provisions and getting them, I guess, more in line. Council pointed out, did a more comprehensive review, probably not only for North Reading, but for other towns that they represent and found a couple other areas that require some attention and alerted Danielle of that and Mike, Mike also. And that's why we're having this quick meeting to make sure we can basically try to get things in order prior to the select boards meeting where they whereby they'll be voting or being asked to vote on these articles. So I'll start with that. Danielle, you could summarize, it looks like, you know, because we corrected a couple of things on the 10th on our, on our special call at Zoom meeting. It appears we have maybe another three ones, three items to kind of correct here roughly.
Yeah. Um, I'm sorry, I just kicked myself out of share file, but um.
Yeah, but it's so, I got it right in front of me printed out. I got it right in front of me printed out. So there's no problem at all. And kind of put you on the spot there, but the first, the first. So I'll just kind of go through really quickly. The, the first one is in Article One. And it is something that was brought to the attention that the, the, I guess, the guidelines on Daniel.
Um, oh. Dave, I think you froze.
Is it cold in the car turned heat up?
Dave, I think you're frozen. Oh. Do we still have you? Hmm.
We might have. Long heroes.
Well, I wonder if he might need to sign out and in to the Zoom. Yeah, I think he's going to do that. And then we'll, uh, we'll let him back in and hopefully that'll be refreshed. Oh, here we are.
Any better?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Anyways, I'll, I'll repeat myself, but it was in Article One. And the guidelines were pointing out that I guess we should not be, be using one family detached dwellings and rather principal dwelling. Is that correct, Danielle?
Yeah. And I, so TA and I met with John Eichman to go over these changes. And basically what was explained to us is that the, the regulations, the draft regulations are making more explicit that this applies not only to single family houses. So while you can have a multi-family house or two family, a three family house that has an accessory dwelling unit, it's still one per lot, but they wanted it made clear that it could potentially exist on something that isn't a single family house. So town council was suggesting that we change that those references to the one family detached house to, you know, principal dwelling, just.
Right.
An existing two family can have an ADU.
Right, just one.
Just one, yeah, just one. Yeah. So that, that, you know, just stop there and let anyone, everyone kind of comment on that. Like personally, I, I get it, you know, and I see where the, where the insertion is to, you know, principal in the language. So like, again, with Article One, I don't see any issues, but I want to make sure. And I don't think that's, there's still, there's another item in Article One, but that, that mean definition, does anyone have any questions on that?
No.
No.
So they're allowing an ADU now to go into multiple, not multi-family home as well?
Yep.
Because that, that wasn't. Okay. Cause that, okay. Because that was not, that was not the, um, the original language that, I mean, is that something that came through a, a change? Or where did that come from? Because that was not originally drafted.
Reason, I can explain it there. Yeah. The, the reason was there was the change in, rather than indicating it strictly as single family homes, it doesn't differentiate. So that's why we had to change it to word principal. Cause the principal, the principal dwelling could be a two family and still put an ADU on.
Right. We just don't have a lot of them, Jeff. So it's like technically, I mean, with our town, it doesn't really impact us that much, but other towns you'd be, you'd be leaving out a lot of other residential homes, I guess, you know, and yet the law is stating specifically it's for residential, you know, zoned lots. So technically I, I can understand, you know, why they're just trying to clarify or just get rid of the one family language. So in that, that one, again, I, I'm, I, I get the sense that everybody's okay with that. And so then I'll move still Article One is the accessory structures zoning, which is the existing one is 200 dash 63. And this one, there's been some changes in that. I think what Danielle pointed out is that the, the law prohibits having any more prohibitive dimensional requirements than the existing zone, you know, or if it's an RA or whatever. So we're on board with all that, you know, with dimensionally, you know, instead of 10 feet for the accessory structure would go to 25 and, and the front yard and this backyard and all that. The one, one area that they picked up was that you technically by us putting in the 20 foot restriction, that would be more prohibitive than the 35 feet that is allowed in all the residential districts. So that's, that's kind of the changes on this one. And I can read that language in there. If everyone has it in front of them, but the language changes would be as follows near the end of the paragraph. I'll read the whole thing though. And residential, industrial.
Dave, you froze. Um. Dave.
Yeah, we lost him again. His picture's gone.
And in and out.
Want to read this in Danielle?
I'm sorry?
Let me read this in. So when he comes back, it'll be done.
Sure, sure. Let me just, um.
Oh, you can do it.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I just, I, I saw, I heard that he started with a regulation. I just didn't want to pick it up in the wrong spot.
Can you bet it?
Right back. Yes.
So each time I, if, if I just totally get off and get back on, that seems to fix it. But I apologize again. So instead of reading the whole thing, I'm just going to read the change in there. So I get through before I freeze, except that for accessory dwelling units, the side comma rear and front yard setbacks applicable to, and this is the part where that got crossed out. The cross out is the one family detached principal dwellings in the district where the ADU is located shall apply to its accessory dwelling unit. So the one thing I want to ask Danielle is why didn't they use principal before dwelling on this one? You know what I mean? Since we're, we're kind of redefining things that we need to put in principle.
Because in this one, what we're saying is the dimensional requirements are the same as a single family house. So for this, we're not, we're not differentiating between single families versus two or three. We're just saying we want the dimensional requirements to be the same as a single family house. And that's allowed. That's fine.
Right. The, 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 the only thing I have as I, as a problem with this, and I'd like to just throw it out to the rest, rest of everyone though, is I am totally on board with being 100% compliant with the 35 feet with a, with a attached ADU, like an addition or whatever, that 100% makes so much sense. Like what you can't like, you know, restrict an attached to 20 feet or something like that, when they're trying to like add on to their house or whatever to create an ADU. What I have a problem with though, is dimensionally with the nine hundred square foot maximum and a 35 feet allowance in height is just a very like, I don't know if anyone would ever build it because it wouldn't be very cost effective, but it is literally a tower. You know what I mean? And I just, I feel like I'm hope, and I'm hoping maybe that the guidelines might take a look at this one. And, you know, and it's certainly one I feel that I'm going to comment on again, just I'm one person, but I feel like Danielle, and I, I open it up to everyone. I'm just one person, but that we should keep the 20 feet, knowing potentially that it has a, it conflicts a little bit, not 100%, but with detached it does. And see, see what the final guidelines come out. We know we can always adjust in June or whatever, but I, I, I feel like just putting in or leaving it open right now, instead of going back to what we did on the 10th of, of December is, is opening us up to some weird structures being built, you know, in the interim. And maybe we could curtail that at least. So anyways, I'll shut up and I'll let whoever wants to speak, but I guess I'll go through, since we're on Zoom, I'll go through everyone. Warren, my vice chair, like what's your opinion on that, Warren?
Well, I mean, I, I, I thought that the 20, I thought that the 20 feet was a good idea so that it didn't become, you know, an eyesore, you know, next to a reasonably, reasonably architecturally correct house that has this eyesore right next to it. I just didn't, I think that could be construed as damaging the, the character of the neighborhood. So there might be an outright there. Because yeah, like you said, 900 square feet times 35 feet tall, it's a tower. So if they make it round and put a moat around it, it's supposed to, but but I mean, you know, other than that, I, I, I think the choices we made were good. And I don't know if we could, if we stick to them. This is just town council's opinion. Okay?
Right.
So I, 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 I think we're probably not going to hurt ourselves if we stick to our 20 feet and let them take it off. And, you know, you know what I mean? That's what I think.
Yeah. I mean, what town council told me is if we, you know, don't choose to make the change now, and if it does end up being in the final regulations, you know, and again, these are draft regulations, not even the final ones. So, um, you know, the AG's office may tell us we can enforce something. Um, but you know, we can adjust it later if we decide we want to, but I don't think there's any harm in leaving it as it is if we're not.
We should leave it, we should leave it as it is.
Yeah, that's, so go through everyone else on that. And so Jeff, what's your opinion?
Yeah, I got you buddy on that one. I agree with both you guys. That would just be absurd. Yeah. So what we're talking about is detached 20 feet. And if it's, if it's an attached project, then you know, the 35.
Got, got it. And Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I mean, because you have someone in the backyard with the setbacks and they figure they can do a 400 square foot plus spot that'll fit within the setbacks, but then they're just going to throw a second story on it. I think that's going to look ridiculous. So I would rather leave the, the 20 foot restriction in at this time.
Or a third story. They could put a third story on at that point.
Yeah, yeah. 10 feet of story. Yeah.
Well, it's two and, you have a two and a half, I think is the limit, right? Daniel, I think if we're sticking with, but and then I didn't even notice because again, I'm having enough problems with my thing freezing, but is Max on? Mr. Murphy, are you on?
No, he's not.
No.
Okay. All right. So, um, so, so yeah, Danielle, so on that one, would we just maybe just, you know, instead of trying to muddy it up, just leave it like what we had on the 12th?
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. And I think, I think we're good. I mean, here's my thoughts just with that. I'm just hoping again, in putting in some comments and stuff, but at the very least, I wish they would, at least in the guidelines, when things are not like conforming and not 20 feet is more just you're stating a max, but I'll give a good example of that section four there, where it's like any existing structure, you know, no matter how close it is to a lot line, whatever, it that it could be construed as an ADU, a protected ADU, if you will, in the language. You, we, we can't have, we can't put any restrictions on it. And Danielle, you and I spoke about this the other day, but I read it again. And it's like that, that is wide open. It, it just lets any existing structure. So I'm hoping at the very, very, very least, the state at least looks at that and says, you know what? That's a little broad. At least we should kick it to ZBA or something. I'm not saying like it's a no, but at least it should get some review. You know, you don't know if this house is just kind of like it had a garage or whatever, and it was just right on somebody's lot line. And all of a sudden, you know, you can make it an ADU. I mean, there has to be some control here. I mean, it's, it's crazy on this existing thing. And I, I implore you all to read that. It's in, again, it's on section four of the guidelines. I think it is, hang on, sorry. It's page three. I'm sorry, it is page four and it is section four or item four. You know, I'm trying to think of what it's out of. I guess that's in the unreasonable regulation, maybe is it? No, it's just enforceability of pre-existing ADU. So it says that Danielle, it says enforceability restriction of in regulation of pre-existing ADUs. It might say pre-existing ADUs, but the language is so broad, it really just means any structure that could become one. I think they even have that language. This is what we'll.
So Dave, I, I have a question. So basically what you're saying is that you're looking for for the ZBA to at least take a look at this thing before it's off and gone. Is that what you're saying?
Say it again, Jeff. Sorry. Am I froze?
So.
No, you're good.
You're good.
Okay, sorry.
So what you're saying is like, ask the ZBA to like, um, look at this, um, that type of situation before it's actually, because if they.
Yeah, no, yeah, Jeff. So it's, it wouldn't be like we're asking them right now. I'm saying that at least if the guidelines could, on these questionable ones, could just say that the town has the right to require ZBA. You know, it's so, it's, it's not in our hands, but it, at least it's like, you've got to go to the ZBA if you have a non-conforming kind of structure, you know?
So we do have in our bylaw, John Eichman helped us put in a provision that sends it to the ZBA if it's a non-conforming structure, but I don't know if this is a different situation with a pre-existing ADU. But I thought any non-conforming structure still needed to go to the ZBA and that they had to at least make a finding, even if they didn't give it a special permit. Um, I, I'm not 100% clear on that provision anyway. So I think that's something that's going to have to get clarified a bit more as we go on with this.
Right. Yeah. Shall not enforce any prohibited regulation or unreasonable regulation that was imposed as a condition for the approval of the land use or land or structures for protected use. That's the weird part is they kind of like, they're saying the condition, like these are, these are, these predate the passage of the law in certainly of February 2nd, and yet they, they, they call it a protected ADU. It's like, it's such a weird use of the, of the term. It's a new term. And, you know, moving forward, it's going to be that, but it's amazing to, to be calling it a protected ADU and it's not, you know what I mean? Like it wasn't, I guess, you know? It's just a weird, again, that's a weird thing with the state.
It's written really badly, but I think what it's saying is if you, if you have an ADU that was not okay or conforming, and now with these new regulations has become conforming according to the state regulation, you shouldn't be enforcing against it. I think that's what that's saying, but it's not written well. And so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping at least it says that, but even that one's not great, right? Because now, but, but I get it. Like if you already had one, you know, it's, it's what I want to make sure it's not like, oh, I have pre-existing structure and it could be a protected ADU because, you know, and so that's all I'm saying. It just kind of hand, it hand ties Jerry. He has no ability to say, well, you need to be dimensionally, you know, conforming and all that stuff. Since it's not really on our thing to do right here, I'm not going to belabor it. But just to close up, so we're good with the principal change on Article One, Danielle? And we're going to leave like the language at the end of there on 20, 200 dash 63, the same. Okay?
Right.
We're going to try. And then so on that, do you want us to vote on that? Do we need to do anything? Or do you want to? Because I think what this requires perhaps is at least if we, if we do the principal one, we need to do another vote, right? Because the other one, we don't have to change. So it doesn't really require a vote, but it's on the same article. So we need to go change the principal language, right?
I think that we should take a vote. Let's see. Uh, what are my motions? Um.
Could we take a vote on all of them, you know, as amended tonight?
We could do.
We want it to be clear though, that you don't want to do that one. Um.
Well, I don't think we need to vote, but, but I don't think, you know, we need to vote on, or vote on that. We only need to vote on stuff we want to change. So that, that doesn't get changed. So the only thing we want to vote on in Article One is just the principle. So I 100% agree if Warren, if we're able to do that, or if you want clarity, so we just do a motion for Article One with that principle, then let's just do that right now. Like let's do a motion on Article One. Okay, cool. Let's do that. And whoever has a motion, or if it's Danielle, Warren can move it or.
I'm having trouble finding them. They should be here. I wonder if I dropped them in the last week's folder instead. I'm sorry. Let me just, ah, is this it? Nope.
They were in the main, like, um, not in a folder. If you were inside, it was like, um, it had agenda, I think. And it was outside of all the folders. It was in just the main share file. But they were last weeks, but they work, they work for this week, really. They're the same ones, kind of, I think.
I'm sorry. I thought I knew exactly where those were, um, including the agenda and everything else. Let me just quick go into 2020. Ah, okay. Um. So then while I make the motion, uh, let me see. KP edits. Okay. Um.
How many votes do we need to move this, to pass this?
I, I think, um, maybe one, and we'll describe the changes we want. And then maybe take another vote in order to vote on whether you're going to recommend.
He was asking whether we need three or four votes for it.
Oh, sorry, number B. So you, tonight you only need a majority of who's here.
Okay, gotcha. All right, cool.
Um.
I heard the question.
Totally different question. Okay.
I have no idea whether I'm freezing or what. So thank you.
That's okay. I'm covering you here.
Thanks, buddy.
Okay. So why don't I try this motion? Um.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you? Cause they're more.
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah.
I moved the CPC vote to, um, implement the changes to the draft ADU warrant article as suggested by town council regarding principal dwellings. Um.
In lieu of, maybe, right?
Yes, um. In, in lieu of single family detached um, language. And we will not be implementing the suggested change regarding dimensions for accessory dwelling units. Um. And I, I think that's it for that article.
Let's see, you get some point across. So, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I get a motion moved by Mr. Pierce. I get a second. Mr. Sheen, any other discussion on it? Not all in favor, say aye, and I'll do a roll call. So we'll start with Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Steve.
Steve, okay. And the chair, Mr. Redlove, I am an aye. So three in favor and one abstention. So that moves forward. Uh, let's see. Um, and then just to point out too, that was for Article One. And then so Article Two is the zoning bylaw for the short-term rental. And the only thing I see kind of, or two things, one was just renumbering the existing uses, you know, on the table. So there was like a table kind of correction there. And the other was inserting consecutive calendar for the 31 days or less in proceeding the 31 days or less, just to clarify that they need to be consecutive. Is that, is that basically it, Danielle?
Yeah. Yeah. The 31 days.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Otherwise it would be a longer time period. And also, uh, the state regulations on occupancy specify 31 calendar consecutive calendar days. So it would just be.
It says also to have sub subsection B. Is that replacing the subsection B? There is no, there is no subsection A. So.
Hey.
Where is that?
Oh, I see, uh, the short-term rentals.
Let me see.
Gives the town of Benz, the North Reading zoning bylaw sections 200.36.1 and to add a new subsection B as follows.
Mm-hmm.
It goes on to the next page.
Oh, you're right. I'm not even looking at the very bottom of this, uh, number, number.
But there were no changes to that part of the article.
No, we added the subsection B, but perhaps be subsection A, since there is no A.
In the, um, in the, in our zoning bylaw, there is. Because whatever, I don't know what it is, but if there's something in our zoning bylaw that's subsection A. Oh, I know what it is. It's recreational marijuana. This is the prohibited uses part of our zoning.
Oh, okay.
We don't call it out because they're not changing it, but A is recreational marijuana, B is short-term rentals.
Got it. Okay. That's good. Thanks for the clarifier.
Well, there is a subsection A and that becomes a B.
All right. So.
That new subsection.
Does anyone have any issues with that language change adding in consecutive calendar in ahead of days? All right. Hearing none, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the CPC, oh, sorry. I move that the CPC vote to make the changes suggested by town council in the short-term rental units bylaw specifying 31 consecutive calendar days or less. And also the language suggesting renumbering the existing uses in the table accordingly.
No move.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Sheen. All right, motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call. Start with Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
And I, I should say all in favor, but I guess if you're doing a roll call. And then Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Name.
And myself, the chair, I am an aye. At the record show, three in favor, one abstention. Motion passes. Yeah. And I think that's it. So Danielle, do we, do we need to, since we're just kind of like striking that change, we, it's not like you need to, we don't need to vote again, right? Like we don't need to do another meeting before, um, the selectmen?
No, you don't.
Meeting.
No, you don't need to have another meeting about it. I will forward the changes. I'll write up a memo explaining the changes that you voted. If you're able to, it would probably be good and it can be printed in the warrant if you want to just update your recommendation to town meeting, that, that your recommendations apply to the new language, rather than the old language of the articles that you submitted already.
Right. And that's our next votes right now, kind of. Do you want that? Right, and that's our next votes right now, kind of? Do you want that? Okay, great. So is that a another, you have those motions ready?
Um, sure. Um, why don't I say, uh, I move that the CPC vote to, um, recommend to town meeting, um, Article One, including the language as amended this evening.
So so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Start with Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Aye.
Mr. Griffin.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Or in favor, motion passes. Next one.
Um, I'll do Article Two. Um, I move that the CPC vote to, um, recommend to town meeting, uh, the adopted, the the recommended changes, um, discussed this evening to Article Two, um, regarding consecutive calendar days and renumbering of, uh, the table of uses.
And the replacement of subsection B or the addition of subsection B?
Um, that one, what isn't changing, that was already there.
Okay, sorry. Okay, uh, so moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Start with Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Aye.
Mr. Griffin.
Dan.
And I am Dave Redlove. I am a, I am an aye, so the motion passes. Um, I think that is it, right?
Yeah. The only thing I wanted to mention to you, uh, just with regard to town meeting is, um, if we're going to be able to have time to do the public hearing for the FEMA articles, which we expect to have the DCR reviewed language back soon, possibly even by tomorrow, um, we would need to have that public hearing on January twenty first. I can go ahead and schedule that, um, if we're not happy with what we get back or we don't get it back in time to really discuss it, we can always pass it over and cancel that hearing. But if we, I would need to get the add to the paper, um.
Okay, yeah, definitely do that. I don't, I don't, I don't think any of the members were having any issue with that, so.
Okay, great. I will do that. And we plan to do that January twenty first.
Good, good. So I know I mentioned the last time we were talking about like the overlays and all that stuff um, with the, um, the, was it the, um, the flood, um, and I.
Flood plane?
Yeah, I couldn't find it. Is there any way you could just a- attach a link for me and just email it to me?
Yeah, definitely. I can do that.
Awesome. Thank you. I really want to take a good, close look at that, you know?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Danielle.
Sure.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys. So, um, I guess that's it then, um.
Yeah, we kind of need to get that floodplain thing done and get it voted at town meeting because it endanger a bunch of people by not doing that.
I agree.
Flood insurance goes.
Yep.
So, so we need to make sure we keep that moving along.
Yep. All right, well, if there's no other business, I'll close the meeting. Um, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah. And I guess we'll see you, uh. What's the next meeting?
Well, our next meeting is January seventh. Um, the Select Board is meeting on the warrant article on January sixth. I will plan to be at that meeting. Um, I I don't know whether or not, um, we, the, the, you know, I'll be invited to have it as a joint meeting. I will keep you posted on that, but I will be there, so.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I I want to say Merry Christmas to you guys, too. Enjoy the holiday. Enjoy your family.
Thank you, you too.
Absolutely. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Same to the rest of you, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. You, too.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
Cheers.